Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business this afternoon is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Here.
That was Councilman Wilson.
Okay. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Cal Smith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jossberger.
Here.
So that was...
Seven, eight.
I'm not sure if he was...
Okay. Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, who I do not see. And our second registered speaker, apologies, I'm going to pull it up. Is Alan Gunther. Do we have Alan Gunther here? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the reminder, we are actually going to move down to the very end of our agenda, to the last two bills, which are in the Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilman Mosley, and if we can read Bill 290 and 291 together.
Bill 290, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title I, Article 9, Chapter 174, the Pittsburgh Land Bank, Section 174a05, Board of Directors by expanding the Board to 11 Board Members contingent upon the City of Pittsburgh entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Allegheny County, the Pittsburgh Public School District, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank. And Bill Number 291, resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to enter into intergovernmental cooperation agreements with the County of Allegheny, Pittsburgh Public School District, and Pittsburgh Land Bank for the shared operation and administration of the Pittsburgh Land Bank.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Mosley.
Good afternoon. Kyle Chinolopoli, I'm the city's Chief Economic Development Officer in the Office of Management and Budget.
Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us. Could you, you know, give us a brief breakdown of, you know, what, you know, this proposal is and why is this important, you know, for the function and kind of future effectiveness of the land bank?
Yeah. So before councillor, two bills, as the clerk read, one of them authorizing the expansion of the Board to afford a seat for Pittsburgh Public Schools and the other for Allegheny County, you know, for purposes of administering the land bank and entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with all three taxing bodies and the land bank to allow for, you know, contingent upon that the Board expansion will be contingent upon, you know, entering into that agreement, so authorization to enter into such agreement for, you know, purposes as it relates to what will be done with existing liens on properties, setting what the sales and reimbursement prices will be back to respective taxing bodies as well then as the potential for share of future tax revenue for the first five years, as is enabled in both the state enabling legislation and the local statute for giving ongoing funding to the land bank itself.
Thank you. And if you could, you know, obviously, this is somewhat kind of complex.
Sure.
Land use and, you know, real estate ramifications, but if you could kind of just, in the simplest terms, kind of give a side-by-side comparison about, you know, how the land bank, you know, is working now, and then, you know, how it will work, you know, with this intercooperational agreement, you know, and why it's so important.
Yeah. I think it's important on a couple fronts, you know. One, I think this body's familiar with the change to state law that happened last year related to the municipal claims and tax lien law, or known as MICTL, to help the land bank going forward in acquisitions via sheriff sale. That process will allow for new acquisitions, the land bank to acquire those properties and take title more expeditiously, but an important piece of that will be, you know, within this agreement, that, you know, the authorization in this agreement will allow for those liens to be handled with and dealt with more quickly, you know, on the side of things without necessarily getting reimbursement back for those liens, but allowing us to bring the properties back to the tax roll, you know, more quickly on that side of things. So I think that'll be an important piece of it. It'll also allow us to have that conversation and a structured agreement with the other two taxing bodies for properties that are already in, you know, our existing portfolio. There is an existing three taxing body agreement amongst us, and that handles properties as they're sold out of the city's portfolio, but this will then allow us to speak to how we handle them for, you know, any that we transfer to the land bank going forward in a similar fashion to the discussion that we had related to the amendment to the cooperation agreement between the city, the URA, and the land bank. You know, this will allow for us to deal with those properties with the other two taxing bodies in mind as well.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I saw Sally from the... I don't know if we want to call her to the table.
Your prerogative.
Yeah. Sally, I imagine you're here for this, right?
I have other properties.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, well, if you feel the need, any questions I have, then just please join us. How's that? Come up anyway, Sally. What's the difference? So whoever wants to answer the question, I guess. So we are going to add two new Board Members to the land bank. Three. Is it two?
Two.
Two.
Correct.
One from the school district and one from the county.
Correct.
Have they identified?
They have not, no.
We have to approve to add them first, I guess, correct?
We're approving to add them and then contingent upon entering into that, to the cooperation agreement.
Well, let me ask you this, Cal. Was it us that initiated that, or was it the county and PPS that said, "We want a Board Member on this," or was it us saying, "Well, you should have a Board Member"? I'm just trying to figure out who's...
Yeah. The conversations haven't begun with them in earnest yet, right? There've been some outreach, you know, if you will, on that, you know, and our understanding is, you know, that they would want a Board Seat. The other thing I would say...
Your understanding is that they want a Board Seat?
Yes.
Because they're asking them to forgive taxes and they feel they need their one places.
I don't know if I want to go that far as to put words in their mouth, but what I will say, Councilman, is the original legislation that was passed by the city in 2014 also contemplates expanding the Board by two for purposes then of entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the other two taxing bodies. So what is before you is really just enacting on something that was originally contemplated when the bill for the land bank was first approved and adopted by the city.
There's currently nine.
Correct.
So it will be eleven.
Correct.
And when you have that board together, is it much like us here? It's a majority? You have to...
Something's in front of you, the majority rule. So instead of five, it will now be seven.
That is correct, and we will, and we meet monthly at 1:00 PM, and you can see it livestreamed on the city channel as well.
Oh, I'm going to tune in for sure.
If you'd like to tune in, yes.
Yeah. So talk to me about the revenue, okay? As, last time you were here, Sally, I said to you many times, I said, "You're going to..." because we're not going to have $10 million or $7 million a year to give you, because our federal funding's fresh out, I would think, by next year. But, so talk to me about how you're managing a fee or as part of the taxes. So when we get something back on the tax roll, you're proposing that a certain percentage goes into the land bank, correct?
Yes. So there's a couple of factors there. Also, I'm Sally Stadleman, manager of the Pittsburgh Land Bank. State law allows us to collect up to 50% of all of tax revenue on every property that we sell for five years after we've sold it. In addition to that, it's really important that this agreement includes a set purchase price. So if the land bank is purchasing something at sheriff's sale, the Tricog Land Bank, for example, they have a set price of $3,000 that they pay for property at the sheriff's sale. And so if we have a property that's got, you know, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 worth of liens on it, we need to be able to clear those away to get the property back on the tax rolls, and that's likely why it's been sitting vacant for a long time.
Right. So that's why we need the other two taxing bodies. So if we buy something at sheriff's sale, you say a set price is $3,000?
Yes. That's, yeah, that would be the example that we have from the other.
So $1,500, 50% will go into support land bank activities?
So two separate, two separate pieces there. I, so there's the future tax collection from what we sell.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
But I bring up that, that set price and the ability to waive back taxes as if I, if the land bank has to spend, pay back all of those taxes, it then makes it really difficult for us to do the, to work at scale and to capture revenue when we're moving property forward when it's appropriate.
Well, the idea is that we don't have to pay those back taxes because we're going to get, you know, the school board and the county on board and everybody's going to be happy, and we're going to acquire these properties. But you're proposing so that future taxes generated, so say we get something off, you know, from out of the inventory, sell it.
We can hear you, but it's not my time.
Thank you, Alex.
Just came up.
So, so what you're talking about is future tax revenue. So you get it back on the tax roll. Somebody lives there, somebody buys it. The future taxes that they pay, city taxes, 50% will go to the land bank? Is that what we're talking about?
For five years.
For five years. That's what I was getting to. Okay, so how long? Five years? So anything you get back on the tax roll, does this county and the school district also want, or they're going to get their 100%? But, right? I mean, if we get it back on the tax roll, then they're, it's back on the tax roll, and now they're collecting taxes from it. The only thing, city will get half of the city taxes, and the land bank will get the other half for five years.
So I'd say a couple of things. One, that, you know, Sally referenced, there's the state enabling legislation that contemplates the 50, up to 50% for up to five years, and that's for, you know, real estate taxes. The local legislation that City Council passed 10 years ago does the same for city taxes. In terms of your question to the county or the school, that will be, you know, subject and agreed to in the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, as far as, you know, if they come in for the same, to, again, help with that. The other thing I would also add as well, you know, Councilman Coghill, is if we think too, you know, as it relates to the liens, you know, in this conversation, at least for those that are within the city portfolio right now, they're also costing us money, right, related to maintenance, and then to say nothing of the blighting impact and influence that they have on our community. So, you know, it is, it is a bit of sort of foregoing that short term if we would have ever seen that money or when we would see that money, in order to be able to, again, return them to the tax rolls more quickly and return the properties to productive use.
So incentive for you, Sally, is to get it back on the tax roll so you can start generating money so you can self-sustain the land bank? Because as it is now, you have $7 million to work with. Where are we at on that? Are you...
3.5 million.
3.5, so you threw half of it. Okay, gotcha.
Yes, and I, we will move to a more self-sustaining place. It's, I don't think there is a land bank that exists that is truly self-sustaining because part of our mission is to create affordable housing and take on property that the private market can't, and so, but yes, in some aspects, we will be a little more self-sustaining.
And that's the only way that you found out or figured out how to actually collect a fee or bring some money into the land bank. Let me ask you this, the two Board Members from the school district and the county, are we going to get a commitment from the school district and the county that they were going to forgive their tax liens before we appoint these members, or we have to appoint these members and then figure it out?
The, them, our expansion of the Board is contingent upon them entering into the agreement with us.
Good. So they're going to enter into the agreement first?
Correct.
And then we'll put them on if they so choose to enter into the agreement. Do you have a, is it too early to say? Are they committed?
I would say it's too early, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. But we're proceeding, so we're assuming. It's good for them too.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Okay, that's it for me right now, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Do we didn't have, Councilwoman Warwick, you didn't? Okay. Sorry, apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm still, I'm trying to like recap what has been said in a way that I feel like there's still maybe something missing. Let's talk about how the co-op agreement is, you said there's already a co-op agreement in place with the three taxing bodies to forgive the past liens on our current inventory. Did I catch you saying that? Is that how you said it?
I, there's, there's a three taxing body agreement between the city, the county, and the school related to properties that, you know, come through treasure sale.
Or in hand.
Right. And there isn't necessarily an agreement to forgive those liens, but it's more around the way in which then the revenue goes back into the 3TB trust fund.
The future revenue.
The revenue of sales.
Okay, revenue, sales.
Director Ghula, I don't know if she's on here, would be best to speak to this, but the revenue from the sales of properties that the city makes goes into the 3TB trust fund. She uses that money to help pay for, you know, maintenance of the properties as well as, you know, the staffing, et cetera, to help the city itself with property sales.
And so the forgiveness is just being done ad hoc, basically?
Yeah.
And we're hoping that in the future co-op agreement, it won't be ad hoc? Again, just staying in the lane of like the current inventory, the ones that maybe we've had for 50 years or five years or more, something like that, right?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to be dealing with, for the current inventory, both about forgiveness and about the sales proceedings. And then there's this third thing, which is diverting the future tax revenue for five, up to five years. And so what are we anticipating or hoping for there?
In terms of projections?
Yeah. Because as Councilman Coghill was kind of pointing out, there's three different sets of tax revenues, right? That's the three taxing bodies, right? And so are we hoping there's an agreement to up to 50% for five years on the city millage? But are we hoping for a full 50% for five years on the school board millage and the county millage?
I think that's, that's the conversation that needs to happen.
We are, but we're authorizing you to enter into the negotiations, right? So...
Yeah. And in a perfect world, we're all in the same position, right? Whether that's 50 or up to 50, et cetera. But that, that, the specifics of those points have not been agreed to at this point.
I know that would certainly be my hope and intention as the manager, and you will probably be hearing about it. There are issues around, around that, yes.
Okay. So under the current revenue, I have like forgiveness, sales proceedings, and then future tax revenue. It's kind of three bullet points. And then under bucks, separate category over here is the MICTL properties, which you brought up, right? So under, these are ones that we don't currently have.
Correct.
That are out, they are in our delinquent, but the City of Pittsburgh is not the name on the deed. So like, you know, Jane Smith's names on the deed.
Right.
So we're talking about taking someone's house. And I've talked about my concern here that we do so with protections and parameters, and we haven't gotten to that conversation yet, but we need to, right? Because I've literally, like a crazy person would on a weekend, scrolled through the entire delinquency PDF, which is in PDF on the city finance website, which is organized by lot and block number. So it's not exactly by city council district lines, but it, and it's not exactly by streets, but kind of like street groupings. So you can, you know, kind of like what part of the city you're in as you're scrolling through them. And there are enormous number of District 7 properties on the delinquency list, a lot of them around, you know, $1,000. And a lot of the properties I can, I know, because you could just look up the streets, are paying around $9,000 a year in property taxes. And so I have an email to the administration, town with two years running now, I'll send it again soon, and this is, it was unanswerable because we had Jordan Tax Service. This is absurd. If we're billing these properties and they're fully paid at like $9,000 a year, and they've been paying $9,000 a year for years, how is it we just didn't collect this $1,000? They probably don't even know, and like no one's even telling them. These are million-dollar homes that can easily play, I'll forward the email to you too. It's a running email, I keep sending it, and was an answerable question because it was like, "Well, Jordan Tax has the information, and we just, you know, we've sold them the information, and so we can't answer your question." But now we can answer the question, right? And so that's to say, not that we'd be taking, not that we're concerned because it's million-dollar homes, but we're concerned because I'm concerned about the validity of the data in our delinquency list. And so we don't want to be taking, you know, people who are, maybe their home is their only asset and certainly their only option for shelter, and we don't want to be wrong about whether or not they really actually own.
Go ahead.
So I can't speak to the $1,000 gap, but I, I think that, I'm really glad you brought this point up, Councilmember, and, you know, part of my interest in taking this role on is, of course, the land bank will continue our, our current policy and strategy that we would never foreclose on something occupied. We're just simply not, that is counter to the point of why we exist. But we do actually have the ability to take on property to help keep someone in their home and help them with payment plans. So rather than, we would have a pathway to be helpful in that sense, but our intention with the land bank is that we're going to be really careful and diligent about making sure something is vacant and having a process to prevent that. But on the other side of the coin, we have, the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections has identified over 500 properties in the city that are considered dead-end, where they simply cannot find a responsible owner. And I have spent so many years and so many hours on the phone with desperate residents who have no solution to the vacant and abandoned property that they live next to.
I was just having a conversation about one in my office.
Yeah. And so it's, it's very important to me that we are building programming that addresses that problem and, and then keeps people in their homes at all costs.
Thank you.
So, and I look forward to working with you to make sure we're really diligent and honing that, that system in to be effective.
Thank you, right. And so literally like today's conversation in my office, we have kind of examples on both sides of that coin where it's like we have a property that's got, you know, the roof is falling in, there's rodents running in and out, but it's one of those ones, repeated PLI citations, is there an owner, is there not? The owner died, is there family members? Where does the ownership go?
Yeah.
Okay, we're, you know, the people in the attached house, right, are suffering through this in the meanwhile. And then in another opposite, you know, example, also attached home, there was a fire, it's terrible site, you know, so it's a firesite, just repeated citations, it's really problematic, but guess what? We just found out that the person whose home burned down isn't some private equity company out of New York, LSC, it's a resident who's now in, currently right now in secondhand no commons.
Hmm.
And so you really have to pursue your fact-finding. And so now with that, case workers and managers trying to help the homeowner, instead of it going through citations and courts and proceedings to try to, you know, it's more of like, we found the person and we need to get that person, who's a senior, this is their home that's burned down, and we need to get them those resources, and they hadn't been connected with them yet. So you really, you know, we really have to be cautious. But so back to our three things. So under MICTL, you don't have to have a forgiveness agreement because you're taking a property, but the liens are cleared at auction.
They, well, without this agreement in place, they are not cleared at auction. That's, that's the challenge, is that we cannot access, I could go to sheriff's sale tomorrow, I would, the land bank could go to the sheriff's sale tomorrow, and the land bank would have to pay all back taxes without an intergovernmental cooperation agreement in place, yeah, to make sure those taxes are cleared.
I would say, to build off Sally's comment and to your question, Councilwoman, like this is the next step, right? After MICTL passed last year, and really being able to fully utilize that new tool in our toolbox, you know, for new acquisitions again, you know, into the second sort of bucket, as you said, this will, this will be a critical and important piece for us to be able to really unlock the power of that.
And then similarly, if we take, it's taken under MICTL, then there has to be an agreement on what to do with sale proceedings, and again, similarly, agreement on what to do with the five years, up to five years of tax revenue.
Correct.
All right. So they're just like two parallel, but in my mind, they're two parallel things. Okay.
And for our listeners at home, MICTL is the municipal claims and tax lien law, it's state law, and we passed amendments to improve the sheriff's sale process last year.
I said that in my...
Oh, okay, oh, sorry.
It doesn't hurt to repeat it.
I was wondering what MICTL was.
It doesn't hurt to repeat it.
Yes, and we could literally, we're kind of like, the one is treasure sale, but then MICTL would call it sheriff's sale, right?
Exactly.
All right. And again, I'm not sure I heard the answer or that I understood clearly. Have the other taxing bodies asked for these Board Seats?
Our understanding is that they, they want them, yes, as part of, as part of, you know, ultimately entering into the agreement.
One for the school board, one for the county, just one each, though.
Correct.
So it's two, yeah.
That's right.
Interesting, because I do, you know, we had lengthy debates about how to structure the land bank board in 2014, and we can always change it, I guess, but, you know, we, we never want to see the kind of representation by the city council especially diluted in a public entity, right? Because that leads to privatization. It's like one of the steps of privatizing a board. It's the same debate where I voted no on expanding the PWSA Board, is that under a court precedent, it's not even really written down anywhere in law, but like if you, if you have mostly private citizens on a board, you can challenge whether or not it's a public entity. And so I would like to see that these seats are actually elected.
Okay.
And not like the county appointing a private citizen or the school board appointing a private citizen. And I think that makes more sense. Again, as I like to say affectionately, and I've said in other contexts, like, you know, we love our nonprofit partners, but nobody elected them, and they're not accountable, they're not transparent, Sunshine Law Act doesn't apply, all that kind of stuff. And this is a public board, and we do have Sunshine Act, but I have been lobbied by citizens to make our citizen commissioners and our citizen Board Members like take an oath like we take it here at the, at the council. And so there's just a little bit, you know, I think, extra accountability and certain kind of publicly facing role that the elected officials have, so that's my two cents. But I think that's all I've, I've got, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin. Councilman Charlin?
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. I was, however many years into the pandemic, I still have, I'm probably myself off mute. I want to echo Councilwoman Gross's points there. I think, am I, I, who is it that we're actually be appointing these, these positions here?
Could you repeat that, Councilmember? You're cut out.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
No, I apologize. Who is it that is actually doing the appointing of these members to the land bank? Or a representative from the school district and representative from the county? Who is it that actually makes that appointment?
Yeah, it's, I believe the way it's, it's written in the legislative... Yeah, it's, I believe the way it's, it's written in the legislation is it's the respective, you know, taxing body through, you know, a process that would ultimately be defined within the agreement. But with, there's not, it's not prescriptive at the moment, you know, as to what process they need to follow since they're their own duly elected, you know, legislative bodies.
Yeah. The way it operates in kind of a weird way, as far as I understand it, where, you know, we don't necessarily even have a ton of say over who the ideas are to the Land Bank. And I, and I do have some concerns about that, but I guess my question, you know, for all things Land Bank is, is this something that we believe will increase efficiency? If the answer's yes, then, you know, I'm happy to support it. We, we desperately need to move properties through. I'm really excited about the progress we've had so far, but want to make sure that this is something that isn't an actual layer of red tape. It's something that will actually increase efficiency. Would you either, Sally, if you could, you know, kind of address, will this make us more efficient? That's my, my biggest concern.
I'm going to take a crack at it. Your audio was cutting it out, but at least as I heard it, as I heard it, the question sort of at its core was around, will these actions ultimately make the Land Bank, you know, be able to be more efficient? I think we can say, you know, directly and unequivocally, yes. You know, that, that, that having, you know, this agreement in place, you know, will allow for the Land Bank to be more efficient and, you know, to, back to, to Councilmember Gross's questions and comments, both around those that are in the existing portfolio of the public, you know, writ large, as well as, you know, new acquisitions through sheriff's sale, utilizing those new powers that were approved by the state last year through, through MICTL. Sally, I don't know if you have anything to add.
All right, well, that's, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I heard Council President, I guess, took over. I, I just want to say first off that I really appreciate all the work that's been happening around this. You know, the one thing that we can all say, you know, with all three taxing bodies, that we all have the, we all have the same issue that we have, you know, we have those vacant abandoned property that exists in our city for multiple reasons. And now if we're all on the same page with how, like the process that we're all going to agree to to make sure that we're moving these properties along and putting them back in the tax rolls, that's just the unique situation that all three taxing bodies are in. And sure, we could go to, we could go to sheriff's sale, we can remove the properties currently through the treasurer's sale over to the Land Bank, and we can do all this right now and, you know, clear title and that whole process could take place. But having this, you know, this, this other agreement in place, the three taxing money agreement, you know, is just essential. So I really appreciate the members that, you know, are supportive of this, the administration. It's, uh, it's been great to work with the administration on getting this done. And I want to thank Sally at the Land Bank for, you know, all the efforts that she spearheads as well. I did have a couple of questions, and that's related to if this is, if this, if this all goes well and, you know, we, we get all the items that we'd like to see in terms of, you know, foregoing the liens and, and then also, you know, the revenue that we could capture from the, you know, the, the tax revenue, if we, you know, gets 50% of the taxes for the next five years. The question I have is like, would that actually, you know, the next step, if that, that is the case, specifically for that, that, you know, to receive the taxes for the next five years, half of it, would the next step be to create a fund? Like say this agreement gets completed, will we then create a trust fund for the Land Bank to receive those funds?
You know, Councilmember, I'm not 100% sure, just because it's, it's a little too early to have those conversations yet, but the funding would come directly to the Land Bank. It would, it would return to the, the Land Bank, whether it's a fund or if it's just simply entering into our bank account, it, it would come back to the Land Bank.
And, okay, great. And then the other question I had was the timeline. Chief Chanelle, do we have a timeline that, that you're working off of? I know we've talked about this, but it would just be great to go over this again.
Yeah, I, I, there isn't a sort of date certain yet, Councilman, in terms of when we would expect the, the agreement to be done. I know that, you know, the solicitor has reached out to her counterparts at the county and the school, you know, and they're working in earnest to, to get, you know, regular meetings set up in order to get it done. So my hope would be over the next few months at the longest. But, you know, we also, as Sally referenced, at least for the county's part, have an understanding of how they've structured the agreement for the TRICOG Land Bank. So, you know, we know what they are comfortable with and, and, you know, that's helpful. But certainly we need to have that conversation with the school district because this is, this is a new thing for them as well.
Okay, great, so say this passes today and then we take final vote next week. The next step will be for the solicitor, our solicitor, to, to then engage in those conversations for this agreement, correct?
That's right.
Okay. All right, well, since this doesn't have to come back to council for approval, since it's not written yet, and, you know, you all get together and, and, you know, a solicitor would activate that and the administration would activate that. You know, since it doesn't have to come back, it's not written. Could you just make sure you keep, Council, in the loop on, you know, if we're, if we're meeting all the, you know, everything we'd like to see in the agreement, if we're meeting all those expectations throughout, throughout the, you know, throughout the negotiations?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, thanks for all your work on this. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. So I just have, I guess, just a few questions, just about the sheriff's sale process. So, so we're talking about privately owned properties at this point, right? That's what we're, that's what we're talking about. So, so this agree, oh, go ahead.
I'd just say, I think that the ICA, it will, it includes, it, it will help the Land Bank process property receiving from the city's inventory as well as existing privately owned. So we really need it for both, yeah, both pipelines.
But so, and, and I'm asking all this because I'm, I'm always like curious about how we, and I mean, we, we've discussed this before, you know, it's great that we have all these CDCs that are doing affordable housing in Pittsburgh, it's super, you know, they, they do great work. But I also want to make sure that there are opportunities for individ, you know, residents who, who, or whether it's a residence or it's a small group or it's a co-op or whatever, a group of neighbors or whatever, to also have the opportunity to, to access these properties and do something with them, whatever, whatever that may be. So just in terms of this sheriff's sale, so this agreement, so if there's a sheriff's sale, how does that work? Like, does the Land Bank have some kind of priority to buying a property? I understand that, that this agreement would, would help, you know, clear the, the taxes so you wouldn't have to pay those, but.
Yes, and in addition to that, the state legislation enabling municipalities and counties to create landbanks gives the Land Bank a priority bid. So we would be able to, to purchase something directly without that competition, which is unlike the current treasurer's sale. I will say that there was a case that is somewhat related to our priority bid. It was, it was a U.S. Supreme Court ruling called Tyler versus Hennepin County. So we are, we are waiting to hear back. I think landbanks nationally are trying to figure out how that affects how they operate.
So was that like a private individual suing because the Land Bank got priority?
No, it actually wasn't related to landbanks at all, and it was more about how to classify a, a taking. I don't, I mean, I can go into it, it, it's going to take like 15 minutes to explain, but I'd be happy to do it an hour later. But it's not directly related to landbanks, but it does end up affecting our, our priority bid. We, we think, we suspect, that we're trying to work through it. So I just want to be careful by saying, a year and a half ago, I would have said, we definitely have a priority bid and that's a really important part of the sheriff's sale, and things have just gotten a little bit complicated.
Okay, so, well, let's just say, so I, you know, I, you know, next door to me is a house that's, you know, tax delinquent, and let's just say, I'd love to buy this house and rehab it for my kids, right, for my, you know, to move into. The Land Bank also has their eye on this house. So how does that work at the sheriff's sale? Right now, the Land Bank has priority over me as the, right?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's true. I think my understanding of how, what that would, would look like, and I suppose it would, it would depend on what that particular end use is. I think in a situation where we knew ahead of time that someone around the property would be interested, what I would say to that resident is, if there's flexibility with what the intended end use of the structure is, so let's say I'm, I'm working with a CDC or nonprofit who's chosen five houses that they think would fit an affordable housing pipeline, and then we hear from a resident that they're also interested in the property, I'd go back to the CDC and have a conversation about trying to open that house up to the resident. And we've been having those conversations with several of our CDCs, and they are open to having that conversation and making sure that we're setting property aside. And then I would go back to the resident and say that you're probably best served with the Land Bank taking this property because we can ensure that any of those liens, mortgages, you know, any kind of liability on that property, we'll be able to, to wipe that away. So there aren't any surprises waiting for that end user. We also would allow that resident to be able to access the property and take the time to acquire a loan so that they can complete the work. And so there would be, it should be a much smoother process with, with much less liability buying directly from the Land Bank, rather than buying a sheriff's sale or a treasurer's sale where you can't see the inside of the, the property. And as a, an individual, you don't necessarily have the ability to wipe away maybe a previous mortgage and all of those back taxes. So I think, you know, I, I'm sure there will be cases where we have a resident interested and it goes to a CDC, but I think we'll, we should be able to see just as much of the, the other case scenario as well. And I am certainly very interested in making sure we're building that programming for residents and kind of taking away that guesswork and long timeline for a resident interested in buying a house like that.
The other thing I would add, and Sally can speak to this or any of the board members, Councilwoman, but the, the policies and procedures of the Land Bank also contemplate, you know, a prioritization, if you will, for the way in which they sell properties with residents, you know, LMI residents in particular, you know, being, being given priority over CDCs or others, right? So there is that opportunity to, you know, utilize that preference within the policies and procedures, coupled with Sally just said, in order to help facilitate the types of uses you're talking about.
And then could you explain again the $3,000? So you, so treasurer's sale, you just pay a flat $3,000 for any property?
That is something that will have to be negotiated in the ICA, and I just used the TRICOG Land Bank's intergovernmental cooperation agreement with something like 20-some school districts and Allegheny County. Is, that's the number that they landed on.
Okay, okay. And then that cost, then the Land Bank then passes that cost on to whoever they sell the property to, right?
Yeah, ideally, yes. You know, again, if other sources of funding become available, that can help subsidize that cost. You know, we can, there could be flexibility there, but I think to be sustainable, at this point in time, we, we are looking to collect our, at our costs, at minimum our costs of property we're processing, yeah.
Okay, so then, yeah, so that would be, so, so the Land Bank would be, is collecting, but will there be cases where you add, so, so you're selling, right? So you, you take the, you pay $3,000, take the property, and then you're reselling it, whether it be to a CDC or a private individual or whomever? I mean, will there be cases or have there been cases where you, you actually add, where you're, you're making some money off the properties?
Yes, I mean, I can't see how we can be moved towards sustainability without some programming of that nature.
Okay, and do you, will the, are those decisions you make on a case-by-case basis depending on the buyer?
Yeah, the buyer, the condition of the property, where it's located. You know, I think the challenging thing about real estate is it's, there's so many factors at play. So it, it will certainly vary depending on, you know, all the usual factors that feed into the pricing of a property.
Okay, and then my last question, I guess, is, and there are other, I mean, besides the, the county, the city, the school, there are other entities that can have liens, right? Like can't PWSA and, and others have liens on the property? And those don't get erased, those are just part of the, those you have to pay?
Those will be erased through the sheriff's sale process.
Oh, those are erased as well?
Yeah, we, we have free and clear powers when we're quieting title through a sheriff's sale process. So we would be able to remove a mortgage or.
And that is just the Land Bank that has that power?
The city also has free and clear powers through the treasurer's sale as well? Yes, yes, and the, so I guess MICTL is the, the state law that gives the Land Bank free and clear powers through municipalities. Yeah, I, do you know for sure? I just don't want to misspeak. I think you're correct, yes.
Yeah, I'd need to confirm it to, to be certain, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds correct.
Okay, so, but an individual or say a private real estate developer would not have that? They would have to pay off all the liens?
Exactly, yes, and negotiate with all of those entities, yes.
Got it, got it. Okay, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, because that, that is one thing, I just sort of, I think it's worth saying again, is that while we do want to be in, and, you know, creating affordable housing, which is great through the CDCs, I, I also think it is important to note that, you know, allowing folks to generate, you know, generational wealth within whatever by fixing up and selling market rate, market rate housing is also important if that is, if that is, I mean, it's hard, it's not easy, right? But if that is something that we have, that a resident is prepared to do or something they're interested in trying, I think that that's, that is worth, you know, helping them do that wherever possible. Because I, and, and also making the avenues to do that clear, right, for, for folks, because it.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And we hope to have, we should have three to four single-family homes to begin this exact pilot program on our April Land Bank Board meeting.
Great, and also, just as another note, in those cases, it would be nice, as the Land Bank becomes more solvent, is that if the Land Bank in those cases, which will not be the most common, right, it'll normally be CDCs, that's fine. But in those cases, if the Land Bank can find it within their budget to just forgive the, you know, or say, hey, look, here's the, you know, take the property over, you've gotten, you know, you're, you're going to fix it up and do your thing and just let them have it in that case, would be nice. Okay, thanks, that's all for me.
Any others for first round? Second round, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm one thing. Councilwoman Gross asked you, which I didn't realize when I was asking you. When you go, and I understand you're going into negotiations with the school board and the county. So it's not just city property taxes that you're looking to collect 50% off, but you're going to negotiate, you hope, with the county and the school board to give you also 50% for five years. Okay, I didn't realize that, I thought it was just on the city's end, so, okay. So that will generate three times as much as what I thought you might be generating. Okay, so, and we don't know that until you're actually negotiating, of course, right? As to, like, are they going to agree to that or not? Okay. Okay, and the other thing was, again, through that same conversation, am I in the understanding that the county and the school board can appoint any individual? Doesn't have to be an employee or, or a county or a school board representative? It could be a private citizen to the land bank board?
It, it doesn't, sort of...
There's no guidelines for, on that?
Correct.
So they can appoint an official, or they can appoint somebody who's just a private citizen who, yeah. Their appointments, basically, no matter whom.
Right, and I, I think it's tough, 'cause we, we certainly don't want to speak to those entities. I'm generally under the impression that it would likely be an employee or...
I would think so, but you never know, I guess, right?
Or a representative, yeah.
But it doesn't have to be.
We won't know for sure until...
And that goes to Councilwoman Gross's point as to where's the accountability if it's not an actual official, if it's a private citizen. Okay. So you're through three and a half million dollars. Of that, how, do you have a number for me as to how many lots with structures? And how many private, or lots with, empty lots that we've acquired or, or working on, or... So what did the three and a half million get us so far, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We have around seventy properties in our pipeline. Oh, I'm so sorry, I, I have, I'd be happy to follow up and, and share those properties. And we are coming up on our quarterly one report that we will be sharing with council, um, that will have that information as well. I just, I will certainly guess incorrectly if I try and say it on the...
Okay, so you don't know how many properties we have that have, um, structures on them that we can actually rehab and get on the tax, back on the tax rule at this point?
I, I don't know exactly of that seventy-seven in our pipeline. Um, the structures we have taken, uh, requested so far, fifteen of which we've received the deeds for today. The first fifteen are, there's only one, there's two structures. But we have identified end users before, for those structures, um, because we're not at the point where we can take on managing the stabilization. And so mostly, we're partnering with Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation, who, they're bread and butter. What they do is rehabbing single-family homes and selling to eighty percent area median income buyers. And so we probably have somewhere between twenty and thirty structures, um, in our pipeline heading to PHDC. Um, a much smaller amount are earmarked for Rising Tide Partners, who of course work with their local community development corporations on property as well.
So if you turn the structure, if you give the structure to Rising Tide or City Bridges or whomever, the fifty percent would still be part of the...
Would still apply.
Tax, the, the real estate tax revenue collected over the next five years would still be incorporated in that.
Yep.
Got it, so it doesn't matter. But of that three and a half million dollars, we have maybe thirty places that we could rehab and get back on the tax rule, or...
We're hoping to be able to process somewhere around a hundred and fifty properties with that three-point-five million.
But does that include empty lots, too?
And that includes vacant lots, yes.
Okay, so, so if, um, one of the nonprofits decide to build there, same thing, as, as long as it's generating taxes. But of course, that won't be for...
Few years.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I would say, too, that, you know, we're, you're talking about, there are the ones that we, we voted on last year and this body voted on as well, you know, to transfer at the URA over to the land bank for purposes of, you know, urban ag, um, community gardens, a playground, you know, and some other community uses. So those, those wouldn't obviously have tax on them. But, you know, it is advancing, it's remedying blight, right, and also advancing, um, you know, community assets for neighborhoods.
Are we focusing on, um, our inventory, the city's inventory first, before we go into sheriff's sale and treasury sales, right?
Yes.
Okay, because, um...
Yes.
And, and Sally, to dead-end properties, do you have some magic wand that find out who and how we get a hold and how we can get these properties in our hands? Because I, I have no luck finding who the actual properties owners are.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want, we want to be really thoughtful and methodical about how we're, we're, um, reviewing those properties. But essentially, um, I think, you know, currently, there's no next step, right? There is no automatic, let's, let's look and review and see what we can do next, um, once PLIs completed that citation process. But, but I think once we review, we confirm that it's vacant, the next step would be, would be sheriff's sale.
Right.
Um, once we're, we're set up to do that.
The sheriff's, the sheriff's, sorry, the sheriff's sale will allow us to get control of them more quickly than currently, you know, in the, in the notice service requirements that are part of the treasurer's sale.
So we will be focusing on acquiring those before we clean up our seventeen thousand parcel inventory still, right? So as a dead-end property goes, we can pursue that in the sheriff's sale one.
Yeah, and I think ideally, I'd like to try as much as we can to prioritize structures because a lot can wait.
Quicker to get them back on the tax rule, right? I mean, it's a matter of going in there and fixing it up.
Green back there.
Uh, let's see, share everything too. Condemned properties, doesn't matter, they're, you know, um, doesn't stop you from acquiring it?
Yes, and I think the land bank is, could essentially be the only entity that can help with something once it's marked.
Is that right?
When, when there is no owner, like truly no owner to be found, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
That or conservatorship.
Okay. And that's it for me now, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just, one more quick thing. Um, back to the, I've, I've like reread the text file for the, um, board appointments amendments. So that's one, that's the, um, zero-two-nine-zero, right? Yeah, that's zero-two-nine-zero. And I'm wondering if we should maybe, if the sponsors would consider working on some friendly amendments? Because on reading it, it really is so loose that, you know, the county could appoint a stockbroker from New York City. It's so loose, they could, you know, appoint some venture capitalist from San Francisco. Um, and similarly with the school board, it's really, really loosely worded. And if we're really hoping that the appointment is gonna be like a city resident and not just like someone who lives, you know, the country or out of the state, or even out of the city, you know, it could be a random attorney from, or a Sinclair, um, then we should put that in there. And similarly with the school board, like, if we're really kind of have an idea of our ideal, what, what, who would best serve on this Pittsburgh land bank, then we can put the eligibility requirements in the language, and, and it is in the language. So, that's a thought.
Any further discussion?
Sally, suggest a one-week hold on the, the board appointments then, to consider that? Members?
Yes, please.
I certainly believe that we could add language that would suggest who an ideal candidate would be. I don't think we could have language that is so prescriptive that we're demanding the county, this is all, only who we will accept while we're...
It's our land bank, it's really...
Trying to negotiate. My fear is if you become too prescriptive, you don't allow any wiggle room for the people you're trying to negotiate with to actually negotiate. And then you potentially lose the ability to create the agreement that we ideally want to create. And thus, also the taxing agreements.
You never know until you ask.
That's...
What are the board, what are the requirements now?
These are brand-new seats, and so there are no requirements.
No, no, but I mean on the existing seats.
The other ones have, like, that they have to be from a certain part of the city, because, um, the, the, um, of the amounts of distressed property in which quadrant of the city, board, um, this three seats are controlled by the members who have the most distressed properties. And so that's District Nine, District Six, and District One, no, Two. Um, and then the remaining three seats that both of the mayors appointees and the city council appointees jointly appoint the remaining three seats, and those have a bunch of expertise, community development, real estate, but then also have to be from distributed around the city. So it's, it's overly complex, I'll grant you. But there's no, there's nothing in the eligibility for the county, the newly proposed county-appointed seat or school board-appointed seat. It could just be, you know, the king of Bahrain, if there's a king of Bahrain, I don't know, is that a place? I mean, it could literally be anyone. So I think they could be a balance between overly prescriptive and zero prescriptive.
Sure.
I'm sure we could, we want to explore that. We might not want to do it this week and might want to take an extra week.
I think we could easily come up with language by Tuesday.
I, I do see Councilwoman Wilson for second round. Follow back Councilwoman Warwick.
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't think it's a, um, you know, definitely a good, I don't think it's a bad thing to, you know, to discuss, so... Not, um, not opposed to discuss the matter, but I think I just heard, um, President Rabel suggest what, I would suggest, it's just something we could work on over the, um, you know, over the, the course of the week here. But I am supportive of the language currently, 'cause I do think it allows, um, you know, those entities, those taxing bodies to come up with their own process that they see fit, which is the ultimate goal is here, for them to have a seat at the table. And if they're, if they're, um, you know, if they want to feel like that they're bought in, then, you know, it'd be up to them to design their process on how they would appoint a seat, I'm, I'm sorry, appoint a member to the seat. But happy to, happy to discuss it as the, the week moves forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilperson Warwick, second round?
I, I just had questions, sort of clarification, so now, yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. So, uh, I, we, I don't believe we have a motion on the table to hold, so I will proceed with no further discussion, assuming no further discussion.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Coghill.
Okay, so, so I just wanted to clarify, so as to what Councilwoman Gross asked, you're gonna come up with language before Tuesday to...
Yeah.
Convene with us and say, yeah, this person should live in the city of Pittsburgh?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I don't think resident within the city of Pittsburgh, no problem. I don't think, but cannot be a lawyer, like, that's when I get too prescriptive. But requiring residency within the city, no problem.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Wilson, third round.
I, I just want to make the point that I, I heard Council President, um, mention that it doesn't seem like a problem to assign someone that, you know, should be living within the city. I mean, let's just remember that, you know, we are going into the agreement, I mean, these talks with the county. So they were like, the county and not all employees would, are, not employees that they would have live in the city, and also the school board as well, not all PPS, not all, you know, um... So just, just something to consider, like, they don't have to live in, you know, the city to do, to work for the, for the school board. So, I'm sorry, to work for the, uh, to propose the schools. So anyway, just want to make that point.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please, uh, bills two-ninety and two-ninety-one, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Obstand, abstain on two-ninety?
Abstain, one is abstention on two-ninety. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us.
Madam President?
I think it's gonna take an hour.
I'm, I'm sure.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Um, if, uh, if I may, I'd like to register, I vote for all remaining bills.
Thank you, so noted.
Thank you.
That moves us back up to Finance and Law Committee, uh, the committee that I chair.
Bill two-ninety-nine, supplemental paper, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement or agreements with Thompson Reuters for subscription to an online legal research tool at a cost not to exceed one-hundred-thirty-three thousand, ten dollars and twenty-eight cent over a term of four years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, affirmative recommendation, bill eighty-nine.
Bill eighty-nine, resolution amending resolution nine-oh-nine of two thousand and twenty-three titled, "Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Pursuant to Chapter One-seventy of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking."
Motion to hold one week.
Motion to hold one week. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of holding bill eighty-nine for one week, please say aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held one week. Bill two-seventeen.
Bill two-seventeen, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of network deposition services for legal transcript services for an amount not to exceed one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and thirteen cent over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, seeing, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, bill, bill two-eighteen.
Bill two-eighteen, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Spillman-Thompson-Battle, PLLC, for expert legal services in connection with a litigation matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an amount not to exceed eight-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-one dollars and fifty cent over one year.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, bill two, two-nineteen.
Bill two-nineteen, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Michael D. McDowell Esquire for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars over one year.
Approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, bill two-twenty.
Bill two-twenty, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Adil Sharif Al-Ghurari in an amount not to exceed three-thousand-four-hundred dollars over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city ES recycling vehicle on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Us, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, bill two-seventy.
Bill two-seventy, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of James A. Genkota III and his attorney Joel S. Sansone for a single payment in two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, new papers, bill two-seventy-one.
Bill two-seventy-one, resolution providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city of Pittsburgh at tax sales, items A through Y, thirty-three forty-four Webster Avenue, fifty-three twenty-two Kincaid Street, sixty-five sixty-nine Odessa Place, two-nineteen Meadow Street, sixty-nine ninety Leamington Avenue, sixty-nine eighty-six Leamington Avenue, seventy-two twenty-seven Kegron Street, seventy-seven hundred Kelly Street, seven-oh-four Brushton Avenue, seventy-seven fifteen Kelly Street, zero Kelly Street, seventy-eight nineteen Kelly Street, seventy-eight thirty-one Kelly Street, five-fifty Core Street, seventy-eight twenty-eight Tioga Street, five-nineteen through five-twenty-one Rosedale Street, sixty-eight twenty-four Fifth Avenue, one-oh-six Gidding Street, fifty-one forty-six Chaplin Way, five-oh-three Climax Street, eight-seventy-one Climax Street, four-forty-three Vandelia Street, thirty-two twenty-eight McClure Avenue, nineteen thirty-six Nobles Town Road, and twelve-oh-six Amanda Street.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second, discussion.
Second with discussion?
Okay, me?
Councilman Coghill.
Thank you.
Follow back Councilman, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, so, um, I'm just curious as to, like, we're acquiring these properties from delinquent taxes? Is that what I'm reading here? What is this? Oh, we are selling them. The city of Pittsburgh is selling them at auction. But they were acquired by a treasurer's sale a long time ago, so, so will that, will the land bank now be doing these?
No.
Right, okay. Gotcha. No, but, okay, that's all, thanks. Gotcha, no, but, okay, that's all, thanks.
Councilperson Warwick?
Um, I just, uh, uh, one question is, with, um, with resolutions of this nature, if we could get the districts included in the streets, I mean, generally, I recognize streets in my district, but sometimes I don't, just to kind of help, you know, just when we get the agenda and we're kind of reading through.
So noted, we'll make that request to finance in the future, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 271, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, affirmative recommendation, Bill 272.
Bill 272, resolution providing for the conveyance by the city of Pittsburgh of certain property, having been placed for sale to adjoining property owners in conjunction with the city of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, items A through L, 3330 McNeil Place, 5014 Jordan Way, 5022 Jordan Way, Zero North Graham Street, 50404 Kincaid Street, 16 Shetland Avenue, 605 Lincoln Avenue, 24 Regina Street, 521 Climax Street, 512 Harker Street, 515 Lovelace Street, and Zero Jacunda Street.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 272, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 273.
Bill 273, resolution repealing an item in Resolution Number 807 of 2023, effective date December 7th, 2023, in order to rescind the sale.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 274.
Bill 274, resolution repealing an item in Resolution Number 805 of 2023, effective date December 7th, 2023, in order to rescind the sale.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices, do I motion to approve invoices?
So move.
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Invoices are approved. Uh, that moves us on to P cards. Do we have a motion to approve P cards?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P cards are approved, that moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill Number 264, ordinance amending ordinance Number 25 of 2016, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VIII Fire Prevention by altering Chapter 802 Fire Safe Building Inspection Program in order to modify accreditation requirements applicable thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 265.
Bill 265, resolution amending Resolution 590 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Operation Better Block for the purpose of implementation of the Pittsburgh Group Violence Intervention Street Outreach Program by increasing the approved amount by two hundred thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed four hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars over five years.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
With discussion?
Second.
Second, Councilman Coghill.
Um, I didn't want David or anybody to waste a trip down here, so if the director and you guys want to come to the table and talk to this, please. What's that? Yeah, sure.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director.
David A. Jones, Assistant Director of Public Safety.
Charles Schauer is Manager Personnel and Finance for Public Safety.
Hey, welcome, gentlemen. You probably went over this with me, I, I can't quite remember, but this is moving two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so this is a, uh, we currently have a three-year contract, this is to enact a two-year extension on that contract. Uh, this is the web app, web-based application that our group violence intervention outreach workers use to track their work as well as set up referrals, um, in the system. It helps us track where.
So, so this is just tech, this is, correct, okay. Councilman. Four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for two years then, is that what it is, um, or is it, is that over the five-year period? Is this for an extension of two years?
For an extension of two years, one hundred thousand dollars for each of those two years.
Got it, got it. So that's kind of what, um, the software, I guess, is that correct? Okay, that's just so everybody's on the same page.
Everyone's on the same page, um, when the risk level assessments go out, uh, levels three and four go automatically to our GVI, who notifies our respective police, and also goes to our, um, Safe Passages people as well. Just so everyone is on the same page and they're communicating in real time.
David, so this is like a closed network, just amongst the people in the outreach program?
Councilman, but the other part is our reach workers and our Safe Passages workers give out resources to respective people that they come across in the community.
So it's a privacy issue, really, it's, it's, it's a built-in privacy, basically, for, for people given sensitive names or information out.
Absolutely, Councilman.
It also lets us know when they do give a referral to an organization, um, it's whether they use that referral or not, so they send it via text message to someone and say, hey, reach out to Triangle Tech, or whatever agency they're referring them to for jobs or services.
Yeah.
If they click that link, we know whether they did the.
No, that, that answers my question, I, it's because it is sensitive information that may be communicated between people.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, Councilman.
Because I thought, why don't we have that, like, built into our IMCP now, you know, so, okay, so it's a special program built around people, the outreach teams.
Correct.
And with sensitive information, kind of closed to them, most of it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, huh, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilperson Warwick.
Um, can, is, can the data from this app be used, sort of, you know, scrubbed of identifiers and be used to actually, you know, report out on, on the Stop the Violence work that's being done, in terms of like, you know, incidences addressed and folks re, I mean, just whatever?
Yes, yeah, and now that we have a, uh.
Crime data analyst.
Yeah, Violence Prevention Analyst in the department, um, she has already started working through pulling the data from this to start putting it into heat maps and other, other things that non-data folks can understand and, uh, be presented to public.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Warwick, so what kinds of metric, metrics are we measuring? And if we don't know at the table, we can just email it to us, I think, but we've had this discussion several other times in the past, like, two to three years, during budget seasons, or, um, um, I think mostly in the budget hearings, about kind of what, what are the impacts that we're trying to achieve? How are we baseline, you know, gathering data, how are we collecting data moving forward? There's been lengthy discussions with council members, so I am curious about if, you know, I'm happy to spend the money on the software, but we know that you really only get out of it what you structure to get into it, so, kind of what questions are, do you have in front of you, right?
Yeah, so I do have a little bit of stuff, um, from the app. Again, um, we've spent the past couple years getting the outreach workers more used to doing the, like, using the app. You know, sometimes there's hesitation, people aren't always as tech-friendly, so we've taught them with that, getting and using it more often. Um, it is in the reach contract that they have to use it, we're also trying to get other agencies that do the work using it, as well as the referrals. Um, but when outreach workers are in a neighborhood and they do their risk assessments, that's collected, so we have that in a table currently. Um, we also have all the lists of referrals, how many referrals they gave to each organization, both that we give money to through the Stop the Violence Trust Fund grants, as well as just in general, like Housing Authority, Career Link, et cetera. As I stated, we're, now that we have a data analyst that focuses just on this work, um, she's already starting to, and she's only been here for a month, um, she's starting to figure out ways we can better collect this data. It is difficult to know, you know, whether they interrupted violence that would have occurred or not, so we're trying to figure out how we can quantify that in a way that's measurable and, uh, meaningful.
Additionally, since 2021, Councilwoman, they've given over fifty-three thousand resources out to respective community, uh, members, uh, which is certainly very, very helpful to help mitigate, uh, potential crimes in our communities as well.
You don't know how many unique cases those resources were distributed to, though, because we weren't really collecting the data very well, or, or you do? You know, so, it wasn't two hundred and fifty-three thousand different youth, because we don't even have that many children in the city of Pittsburgh.
I said fifty-three thousand.
Fifty-three thousand, but we don't even have fifty-three children in the city of Pittsburgh, I don't actually think, so, um, some of, you know, that could have been to twenty-five thousand kids, it could have been to two thousand kids. Um, and it'd be really helpful to understand that, right, and then, or maybe, you know, twenty-five percent of the kids got one referral and never got a referral again, or, and fifty percent of the kids got, you know, a hundred referrals, because, and over the course of how many years, et cetera, et cetera, you know, it's going to give us a better picture of both what are the problems that we're struggling with, how are we doing at solving those problems? Um, and so I would love to talk to the data analyst, it sounds like, not now, not right now. Um, but congratulations on hiring a data analyst.
Thank you.
And does this person have a background in youth violence specifically?
Part youth violence, but they also, they come from another place where they worked in the DA's office as well.
Not here.
Not, not here, in North Carolina, Councilman.
In data?
Yes, that's, that's what, what they did, they did the same exact job in North Carolina that they're doing here.
Right. What, okay. Um, I'll just follow up on that, this is a, you know, again, we've had this conversation repeatedly at the council table, um, it's great to see progress, but also the questions that we may be getting from residents about our budget allocations, or about the community problems that we're seeing, if you don't know the, our questions, then you won't be collecting the information that can answer those questions. Um, so we should definitely continue the conversation.
Understood.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's all, Madam Chair.
Any others for first round? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, thank you for coming today, uh, could you speak to what, what are some of the key benefits that you can speak to, um, you know, about this tool, you know, specifically, you know, from your position with the Department of Public Safety, I know there's a whole variety of, of nonprofit partners and other partners in the community, but from, uh, the Department of Public Safety standpoint, you know, what can you speak to as, as like, some of the key, you know, you know, benefits that you want to lift up about this tool specifically?
So, the, the main thing is our risk level assessment response, so it goes in, in our maps, it goes from green, which is no violence or threats, to yellow when tension exists, but there's no imminent danger, orange, violence is likely to occur, which will lead to red, so, uh, Council, when three and four arrive in our community with our, and our outreach workers put those in Safe Passage work, put those in in real time, that's when the, it is, uh, given to our police through our GVI, and also our Pittsburgh school police as well. Because certainly we know what happens in the school affects our communities. So that's one of the main things that I think has been very, very helpful, along the other, giving the, the, the resources and the real-time tracking is important, so when our outreach workers put something in, it goes to, throughout just as quickly as they can put it in.
And, and how, and how many years has this tool been in use so far?
Since 2021.
2021, okay, thank you, thank you, and, um, and one other question for now, uh, Director Smith, you talked about, you know, you are encouraging, you know, other agencies, uh, to use the tool, so in a perfect world, like, what would those other agencies be to really, you know, um, maximize the use of the tool throughout the entire ecosystem?
Um, so I think anyone who's doing violence prevention or intervention work, you know, Southside Peacemakers, um, our own reach team, a number of other organizations, and then the, on the other side, we're encouraging anyone who provides services to those affected parties, um, whether it be youth, parents, et cetera, to make sure they're on our referral network, and then they have the ability to log in and see how many referrals they've got, and a big thing that we, or they've received, and a, a big thing that we're trying to figure out how to track next, is whether, so our outreach workers make a referral, we know whether the person clicked on it or not, but the only way we know if the person actually engaged or had successful in that, interactions with that agency is by reaching out to the person we referred, um, or reaching out directly manually through the organization we refer to and say, hey, did, you know, little Davy ever come and meet up with you, and they say yes or no, or sometimes they can't share that, so we're trying to figure out a way to be able to track that part, so are the referrals actually being followed up and being, you know, holding everyone accountable from the person we refer, as well as the agency we refer them to, to see if that's being effective?
And as far as our app goes, is the view, so we send said resource out to you, Councilwoman, and then it only just shows if you viewed it or not, and it doesn't go any further, just as the director just said, sir.
Okay, one, one quick follow-up, uh, so, is there, is there something, you know, in the, in, in the software, how's it designed that, you know, are you looking to do like an update, you know, of, of the technology that to be able to have, you know, uh, the kind of, you know, a, a deeper tracking system to know, you know, if that follows, is that something that, that, that you're looking at as far as updating the technology?
For, for sure, we're always, uh, open, and, and Mr. Thompson is the, the, the person that kind of curates this with the students from CMU, they have an active list, and when we say something, case in point, our, um, Citywide Prayer Chain just went in to affect maybe a couple, a week or so ago, that everybody, when there's a risk level of three or four that goes in our, uh, system, wherever there's violence, they are tasked to pray in their own, in their own way, just to help for, you know, reduce the violence, to help pray for peace. Uh, so we're always open to those suggestions, uh, we, we give them to Mr. Thompson and, and his team, and they try to, do their very best to work it out, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, second round, Councilperson Warwick.
Um, yeah, I wanted to ask, so just, uh, since we're talking about, you know, using technology for tracking data, is there, would it be possible to also extend this to, um, the community groups that are getting Stop the Violence funding? Because I know that it, it, it can be difficult to kind of figure out how best to track, for example, you know, number of events that are hosted, and how many kids are at that event, and, you know what I mean? Like, sort of the data around the kinds of things that we want to be sure that we're, that we're seeing, is, is there a way to kind of extend, whether this, this app, that technology to them to make those things easier, so it's not just kind of like, well, we're kind of doing it in a spreadsheet, or we're using a piece of paper over here, and.
I certainly think that's possible, yes, Councilwoman, and we'll, we'll work towards that.
And, uh, is that, just, just since, is that round of fu- funding going out yet? I know that we talked about the second round, is that coming up?
That should come to you guys, uh, next week, I think, right?
Okay, okay, the, the list of awardees, or?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 265, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us on to, let me make sure I'm in the right place, thank you, Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 275, resolution further amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, and a 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program, so as to decrease Shepherd's Heart Fellowship by five thousand dollars, and increase Urban League by five thousand dollars, so as to fund specific public service grant projects of the mayor's office and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 276.
Bill 276, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and a 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program, so as to decrease protecting and restoring the order of mankind with the initiative of serving elders by $5,000 and increasing Urban League of Greater Pittsburgh by $5,000, so as to fund specific public service grant projects of the mayor's office and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 277.
Bill 277, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code Article Four, Planning Districts 908 Public Realm Districts and 909.01 Specially Planned Districts in Article Five, Use Regulations Chapter 911 Primary Uses, Section 911.02 Use Table and Section 911.04 Use Standards, to remove the review of sidewalk cafes from the zoning code.
Can I get a motion to hold for a public hearing?
Motion to hold?
Second.
Discussion? Council?
I, I, I just jumped in here, I'm sorry, but are we thinking about removing sidewalk cafes or?
Yeah, I'm curious too, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, does anybody here can speak to that?
Plan Districts.
I can actually speak to it a little. This is not about removing sidewalk cafes. Right now, you have both the planning department and the zoning department who have to review the same applications. This is about making it so I believe only zoning, or one of those departments will now be the only department that actually reviews that, the applications.
And we just don't know which department to put that in, or they have to figure that out, I guess?
Uh, it's in here.
It's in here, I, I forget which, I believe it's planning.
Okay, my, my only concern really was that we're not
No, no, we're not doing it.
drawing back on what we instituted during COVID, I guess, is when we really came out with that sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, thank you, Madam Chair. No, go ahead.
No, it just goes like, yeah, it's written into the code two different places. And so both departments are now doing the exact same thing. So to do away with, to do duplicity, just have the one department do the review.
Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, that was just to say that we definitely want to keep some review just because of access issues through sidewalks, you know, for folks, I mean, sidewalk cafes are great, but they need to be placed appropriately and whatnot, so, okay, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion? Uh, motion is for a, hold for a cable cast post agenda, I'm sorry, um, public hearing.
Second.
Second, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we will hold for a cable cast public hearing, thank you. Um, Bill 278.
Bill 278, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement or agreements with the U.S. Conference of Mayors for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $250,000 to expand the city's composting pilot.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. Bill 279.
Bill 279, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 97 of 2023, Further Amending Resolution Number 877 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with Ath Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skills training to the department's staff by increasing the approved amount by $45,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $123,150 over four years.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 266, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Power DMS Inc. for the use of the Power DMS Online Policy and Training Management Tool for the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections at a cost not to exceed $5,203.44 payable over one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 267, Resolution Amending Resolution 696 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to extend that sublease agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh for city office space at 100 Ross Street for a 22-month period effective on or about September 1, 2023, and ending on June 30 of 2025 at a cost not to exceed $316,250.
Motion to approve. Oh, that's your committee, sorry.
That's okay. I'm motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Actually, I was hoping for discussion and I got distracted. May I?
Yeah, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So, I'm hoping there's someone who can recap for us what the heck is going on since 2017, I think? Between 200 Ross Street and the $40 million building that I voted no on at 412 Boulevard of the Allies? And what, what, who's where? And why are we still paying so much money? Is anybody here for that?
Do we have anyone from DPW here? We're supposed to have Director Hornstein, I know he is, uh, actually not in the office today. Is anyone online?
I mean, I'm happy to have this discussion Tuesday if we want, but, so HACP was meant to move into 200, or 412 Boulevard of the Allies, which we took out a $40 million bond to buy. We're paying some $400,000 a year for property management since 2018 at least, or something like that? And we were told that we, you know, council was supposed to approve the $40 million bond for Class A office space on Boulevard of the Allies because 200 Ross Street was so terrible. This is at 100 Ross Street. Is that not, that's not the 200 Ross Street building? But why aren't they in the, aren't, you know, they're supposed to be? So we approved a tri-party agreement for the new building, which was the city, the URA, and HACP. And are we paying the $316,000? Are we being asked to pay with this legislation $316,000? And why in the world should we pay that? They're like flush. We're not. So, this doesn't seem right.
Director Pollock is here.
Oh, Director Pollock, would you come up, please? Thank you, appreciate it. I don't know if you heard any of that. So I started off with what the heck is going on with 412 Boulevard of the Allies? $40 million bonds, $400,000 a year property management contract? I thought everybody was supposed to be in there. And then why, why would we pay the $300,000 rent? If that's what I'm looking at here? For when we took out, you know, we've been paying lots of money for the new building? And so why would, why would, are we being asked to, to pay $316,000 for the HACP lease? Do you need to look at?
No, I'm familiar with the legislation. So, um, to be clear, the lease contemplated
Have you been at the table today?
No, Jake Pollock, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management Budget. Um, the lease contemplated here is for space at 100 Ross Street, which we are, we lease from, presently lease from the Housing Authority, from among their office space. So in addition to their space, um, which is no longer occupied or, or only partially occupied at 200 Ross Street, I don't believe they have any employees there, but I'm not sure. They also have a separate office at 100 Ross Street. Um, some of their in-person and over the counter, um, services are located in the first floor of that building. We've been leasing space in the upper stories of that building for PLI and planning staff. Um, council approved that lease, I believe in 2022, um, to have space to operate from. It's not sufficient space for all staff to be there all the time. So the directors and some other administrative staff or leadership staff have been there as others have been on a, a hybrid or remote schedule. Um, this proposed amendment would extend that lease first to allow us to continue to be in that space through the, um, projected completion of the 412 Boulevard of the Allies project, which we expect those folks to be moving in this summer, um, June, July. But then also to continue our lease of the space, um, to provide flexibility as we then plan for further renovation of various office spaces, some in this building and, and other parts of the, uh, um, city. So, so, so in essence, we're per, um, pursuing an option to continue to have access to that space, uh, to accommodate other renovation work. It's important to note that the lease would have a termination clause that would allow us to cancel it early at any time if we find we don't need it. We will certainly need it at least until the PLI and planning staff that are currently utilizing that space move into 412 Boulevard of the Allies. And to, I, I somewhat addressed it in that answer, but to your larger question, um, we anticipate city staff moving into 412 Boulevard of the Allies this summer. You're correct that that process has taken a lot longer than originally anticipated. COVID certainly had a role to play in that, though it wasn't the only factor in, um, delaying occupancy. Contracting was also frankly complicated and, and I would say more complicated um, than it needed to be. There was an opportunity back in 2018 or 19 to have, um, fitted out our space at the same time the URA did. But that's, that's, I can't speak to the decision-making at that time.
Yeah, so just a reminder, we, the city council authorized the purchase of this building under the previous administration and the promise was that, you know, 200 Ross Street was so bad, we need to move everyone, it's going to be this super front door in person. And then basically, we went digital. You know, so we can do things, a lot of things by Zoom, I mean, we had the planning commission meet here in Kent City Council Chambers for the first time in years, because they've been meeting by Zoom, right? We weren't using Zoom in 2018. Nobody was using Zoom in 2018. Um, so, but in the meanwhile, we, we, so now we're kind of like triple paying for space. Is there anyone at 200 Ross Street at all?
No city employees are there.
But there, is there anyone else?
I, I only hesitate because I know that the Housing Authority did have some folks working in person there at one point post, um, you know, COVID work restrictions. Um, I can't say, I can't say off the top of my head whether that's true now. I can say that the conditions of the building are such that that's, um, fairly difficult to imagine, but it's possible there's some limited number of folks in there. It doesn't have heat in the winter, for example, so, um, certainly I wouldn't think this time of year.
Right, so, um, and then, so now we're leasing, um, this office space. You want us to renew this lease?
Extend.
Extend this lease at 100 Ross Street? Well, at the same time, we're, again, we're paying the bond and paying... Are we, is the city paying the full amount of the management fees for Oxford Realty to manage 412 Boulevard of the Allies? I'm just trying to recollect, council authorized that? As an annual property management?
That's correct, and, and there was, um, legislation sent over recently in connection to that property management engagement, um, the details of which I can't remember off the top of my head. Uh, the, the, the purpose of that property management engagement is, uh, you know, general facilities management for the, the new space being that. Um, it is, uh, you know, co-owned by multiple entities and, and so
It seems a shame to be managing empty space, though. And to be paying for it. It wasn't contemplated to be empty when we first heard the contract, I assume.
It, it, so, so, uh, 412 Boulevard is not empty presently. There's no, no, no city employees are working there, but it's under active construction, right? So, so we have city contractors in there, um, working to fit the space out for our move-in. The exact interactions between those contractors and the building manager, I can't speak to. I know the Director Horns, Hornstein is here now, so he might be able to speak to some of those details. But, um, the purpose of the property management is to, um, you know, manage the space once we have staff in there, which we should in a few months.
But we have been paying it for about four, five, maybe five or six years at this point. I've lost track.
I, I know that it was about that long ago that the URA moved in. So, um, there would be, would have been costs associated with property management at that time. Um, that's correct.
It's a shame. I don't want to, I mean, we're close to the end of our agenda, it looks like. But, um, if we, if, if we wouldn't mind just hearing just a minute or two from Director Hornstein, I, I'll ask you to come up to the table to just kind of, if you can summarize for us, like, I, I heard summer 2024 to actually be using the space that we've been paying for, for five or six years? Or I've lost, I, I've said 2017, 2018, I actually can't remember exactly, um, what those years were. Um, so Director, if you could introduce yourself and kind of give us a quick update, I don't want to keep you here.
Absolutely, thank you. Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works. Um, yeah, as Director Pollock mentioned that, um, you know, right now we are projecting that construction will be completed June, July, um, followed by a move-in period um, of, of city staff, of PLI, city planning, um, a few other scattered functions as well. Um, you know, those things will be happening, um, as fit out as complete. Um, and occupancy permits are granted by floor. Um, so we've been coordinating very closely with PLI on those improvements. Um, so as to the mention of the, of the property management, uh, yes, the property manager has been in, uh, on board prior to, um, oh, actually very closely after, um, the building was purchased, um, because we needed staff on site to, um, you know, provide security, uh, manage heating and cooling, um, provide access for contractors, estimates, et cetera. Um, and now for, you know, managing the property, both from, um, the housing authorities fit out and move in, as well as the URAs fit out and move in. Um, those costs are shared by all three parties. Um, so yes, the city has contributed, but it, but you know, that we determined during that process that the property management was a shared service that, that all needed. The regarding, uh, the lease at 100 Ross, um, it is as Director Pollock mentioned, um, you know, both this extension is to, you know, bridge us to, um, our projected construction closeout date as well as, you know, provide the opportunity for, um, flex space for future improvements um, within this building, um, and a few others in the geographic area where we might need flex space.
Thank you. It's, it was my recollection that the city's share of the property management was about $400,000 a year. Am I misremembering that? Sometimes I conflate, like, it's $400,000 over three years or it's $400,000 annual, I can't remember.
Oh, I would say it's the latter, not the former. It would be $400,000 over the three years. We would have, we have given you the total cost, um, in the period of performance over those, over that.
Okay, we'll have to revisit that, so, um, okay, thank you, that was a brief update. That's, I'm going to stop there, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further question, discussion?
I, I just have one clarification, so, um, it was noted that there's a clause that allows us to cancel the lease if we find that it's not needed. Um, if we find that after moving the city's departments in, that we need less space, is there an option to shrink the space and therefore reduce the amount um, that we pay per month or that we pay total? Like to prorate it almost by size? If, say, um, just less space is actually needed in 100 Ross Street than we, than we expect now? Is that negotiable?
That's, yes, absolutely, that's correct.
I don't have any further questions, I'm just curious about that. Councilman Cockell?
No, just briefly, who's occupying, uh, is it 412? Is it, I thought PL, or, or I, the housing? HACP is completely in there, right? Okay, go ahead, please.
The URA is completely in there.
The URA is done, they, they don't need any, we're not The URA is done, they don't need any, we're not, they're not renting or leasing any space at 100. The URA is fully in there.
That's correct.
Okay.
I believe the Housing Authority is, for all intents and purposes, complete with their work at this point, though I'm not entirely sure if they're fully moved in. I'm just not, I'm not certain.
God, we took a tour, Councilwoman Strasberg and I, I thought they were completely in there as well, but maybe not.
I mean, I'm sure from a personnel perspective, yes, I know that they had some infrastructure, IT infrastructure that was proving challenging for them in the moment. That was lingering at both 100 Ross and 200 Ross.
So who's using 100 Ross Street on the cities and PLI?
PLI and city planning. So the city occupants will be PLI, planning, not all, but a portion of the DOME staff, as well as some public works staff who work in close coordination with DOME.
Oh, still working out of 100?
No, the folks working in 100 Ross Street were, are PLI and planning because their offices were entirely within 200 Ross Street. So it's the folks who are unable to occupy their former office space at 200 Ross Street. The DOME staff who will be moving in and the public works staff who will be moving in either work in this building or another building, but they will be consolidated there at that point. And then FIRE was the other major occupant of 200 Ross Street from the city, and they've moved to space adjoining the Emergency Operations Center in the Strip District. So they were in 200 Ross, but they are not moving into 412. They've been relocated permanently to another location.
So the reason why we're extending this lease is because we're not quite ready for them to move into 412, and we're doing that work, is that right, Director?
That's correct.
We are doing that work in all that work?
No, no, not in house, it's been contracted out.
Okay, so
But it's underway presently.
Okay, so when it's finished and we no longer need 100, and then you can eliminate the lease, we can drop out of that lease at any point, you said, right?
Yes, unless we determine, and this is the reason that we've asked for a longer term to extend the lease, we may need, once the 412 work is completed, flex space to move other city functions in there as we rehabilitate other space. But that's a, that's an evaluation we would make on a as-needed basis, as the chairperson mentioned, and the director confirmed, we'd have ability to adjust the amount of space at that point as well. The critical need is for some portion of the remainder of this year to continue to have access to that space as we're moving folks in.
Got it, so at 412, we know the URA is fully moved in. Housing Authority, we think, is mostly
For all intents and purposes, they are, though there might be some
PLI, we don't know, they're not ready yet, because we're working on those floors now.
The space is not yet, the space is not complete. So we know for certain that PLI, planning, and the other city staff who will be working from there have not even begun moving in, because we haven't finished their renovations yet.
But they're underway, those renovations.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, Councilwoman Gross, second round.
I wasn't going to do this, but here I am. So I'm looking at 2020-0748 is the number in Legistar. And it does itemize a lot of money. So while there was only, you're right, the $400,000 was kind of the operating expenses spread over three years. It did start in 2019, it looks like, and that initial amount was $1,148,000, rounding up to $149,000, actually, as property manager, but an additional $4,150,000 for the operating expenses of the office building. And that's in addition to the bond payments. And so it's itemized for the public's reference, you know, $168,000 or so in 2019, $37,000 or so in 2020, and it goes forward from there and then was amended. And so there was an additional like $123,000 in 2020, $254,000 in 2021, et cetera, et cetera. So it's in the records, and now I'm recalling that, yes, it's a lot of money. So I'll just leave it at that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 267, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Bill 268.
Bill 268, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 10th and 11th wards of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 50E, Lots 80 and 83, Block 50F, Lot 101, Block 50G, Lot 242, Block 50H, Lot 59, Block 50L, Lots 145 and 325A, Block 50M, Lot 305, Zero Kincaid Street, 4938 Rosetta Street, Zero Hillcrest Street, 318 North Graham Street, Zero Broad Street, 5205 Jim Way, and 5466 Broad Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 269.
Bill 269, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's right title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 13th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 125M, Lot 184, and Block 174J, Lot 28, Zero Kelly Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Having already recommended Bill 290 and 291, that exhausts our standing committee's agenda. And that moves us on to meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March 26, at 2:00 p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 169 as it relates to the historic designation of Sal's Barber Shop. Speaker registration closes at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. Wednesday, March 27, with sessions at 1:30 p.m. and 2:30 p.m., council will hold a briefing as it pertains to dear management. To manage each session and to prevent a quorum, please confirm attendance with the city clerk's office. Next week, council will hold its regular standing, regular and standing committees' meeting on Tuesday, April 2, and Wednesday, April 3, at 10:00 a.m., respectively. To register to speak at next week's council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Any discussion from members?
I just, real quickly, Madam Chair, Sal's Barber Shop, that's my barber, he thinks he's coming in for a proclamation tomorrow, but he's coming in for a public hearing, is that right? Okay, so would he need to be here? I, I, I mean, I don't know.
He doesn't need to, he can.
I see. So this is a public hearing, we can't approve that designation until after the public hearing.
Correct. I believe Sarah Quinn from City Planning will be here to present.
Okay, I'll call him and make sure he knows why, what he's being asked to come down to do. I did tell him I might give him a proclamation sometime, I think he got him confused and, you know, but the public hearing is tomorrow at 1 o'clock, did you say?
Sounds like someone owes him a proclamation.
Was it 1 o'clock? Is that what the public hearing is for tomorrow?
Yes.
That's at 2:00 p.m. tomorrow.
2 o'clock, okay, good enough, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, can I please get a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.